Is now in session at 8:00 PM. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to sit here for me?
No.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before we start our meeting and go straight into all the agenda items, I think it's important on behalf of the board, and I apologize if you see me start getting light. But on behalf of the board, I think it's important to talk about the, to mention that although we are going through difficult times, which at times people say expect the unexpected. I don't think any of us would have ever expected to be in this situation now. All that's happening, I think we are quite thankful that as a district that we've handled this thus far extremely well, although there's been some kinks, slight kinks overall for the unexpected. We are doing a tremendous job. I wanted to personally thank Dr. Kami for her leadership, our Assistant Superintendents for all of your time. I can only imagine how much time you all are dedicating to making sure that the district stands as it's been standing today. Our board has also been spending time, you know, trying to figure out and hear the concerns of our community, our teachers, the parades that they've been doing, administration, our staff, some that are still coming into the schools and doing what they feel is right to do. There's just, and the parents and the students. The students being resilient and dealing with something that they've never dealt with before. The parents dealing with things that was something, being teachers, and helping their children at home. So this is really a time to be grateful and to say thank you to you all as a district, and we will get through this. We're standing together through this difficult time, but we're doing a great job as a district, and we should all be very proud of ourselves. Although there are some sad days, just be grateful that we are doing this together, and we're doing it very well.
Thank you, Annie.
That's all.
Thanks, Annie.
So on to business items. Item number three is what I'll be going into first. The Board of Education adopts the following resolution.
If you're not speaking, mute your, mute yourself.
Yes, if you can mute yourself, that would be great. The Board of Education adopts the following resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby waives and/or suspends any policies applicable to the conduct of board meetings during the effective period of Governor Cuomo's executive orders closing schools and modifying, modifying the provisions of the Open Meetings Law 202, including any policies relating to public attendance and participation at board meetings. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Move by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have audit many, audit meeting committee presentations. First will be our claims auditor, Stu Fishbar, will be presenting and giving us an update. Hi, Stu, how are you?
Good, Annie, how about yourself?
Good, good, thank you.
Good. So I just have a quick report tonight. I just wanted to assure the board that the claims audit function is up and running. I am in close contact with Jill McGrath, who is handling most of the business operations. Tomorrow, I will be meeting her to pick up the checks that have been cut for this week, as well as the payroll for this week. And then I will perform my regular functions. Any exceptions will be reported back to her or to payroll if an exception involves payroll. So it's business as usual for me. I have issued my report for March about two weeks ago, and you might not have seen that report because of the handoffs involved, so it might not have gotten to you. But it had four exceptions for the month of March. All were very easily corrected, and so all good from my end.
Okay, great. Four exceptions is still amazing. That's excellent, so thank you.
Excellent, right.
Thank you for that. Thank you to our business office as well. Okay. Anything else, Stu, you're good? That's your?
That's it.
Okay, great. We'll go into internal audit presentations. So we have Lauren Gunzo, Michael Reinhardt, and Kyle Zahar. No, I don't want to say incorrectly.
Zaharatus, yep.
Zaharatus, thank you. How are you guys doing?
I'm not even sure I know how to say it at this point. For three years.
Or the call to make sure.
It's all good.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here tonight. This is obviously a unique way to have an audit committee meeting, but nonetheless, it's nice to see everybody. I think we met you once before when we were doing our presentation meeting. We started at the district probably in the February timeframe, maybe later January. We got our risk assessment underway. We were able to meet with Dr. Kami and Dr. Robinson initially to kind of go through process and some other people in the business office. But we were able to get our risk assessment underway. And of course, then this pandemic hit, and we kind of hit a little bit of a roadblock. But I have to say, I have to commend the district in terms of wanting this to move forward and working with us in unique ways to get this done. We were fortunate enough to have a lot of our interviews done before that did. We did have a few left, which we were able to do by phone. But I'm going to let Mike take it over in terms of specifically where we are and what you can expect from us.
Hey, everyone. So yeah, as Lauren said, we're underway. We did our interviews and testing as well. We interviewed areas of governance, budgeting, accounting, benefits purchasing, IT, safety, cybersecurity. We looked at all these areas. We did intensive interviews with various individuals, phone interviews as well. Didn't seem to find any major issues at this point in time. We had middle, minimal to no moderate findings. Very, mostly everything was pretty much low. I would say that we're 80 to 85% done with the combination of testing, interviews, and our report writing. So for the most part, interviews are done. It's really now just finishing up some of the key control testing areas that we've done and drafting our report. And Kyle can go into maybe some of the areas that we did some testing in as well.
Yeah, so some of the areas that we tested were bankrupts, budget transfers, cash dispersments, cash receipts, journal entries, and payroll. We were able to do about half of the testing onsite. And then the rest of it, we were able to do mostly electronic or setting up with the district to pick up some documentation and finish off testing that way. So we are almost done. We just have one of them left to do. And then we'll be able to get everything into the report and drafted.
And we picked these areas too because they're a higher risk area. There's a lot of cash involved, so these are general areas that we like to do an in-depth look into just to ensure that everything in district internal control related is operating efficiently. So I would say, you know, probably in the next couple of weeks, we would have a draft reported and able to be issued to you guys.
Yeah, so on that note, you know, obviously, our interviews and our, our, our testing is a big part of this. Looking at policies, procedures. Stu, we were able to look at a bunch of his reports of the past three years, so we took those into consideration. And just dovetailing off of what Mike said, we haven't had any major findings, which is great. Isn't, you know, we don't see any major control issues. We certainly have some findings slash exceptions, which, you know, we'll certainly vet that out with management, and you'll see it in the report. But nothing that strikes us like, oh, my God, we have to look at this area right away. I would say to you, it would more be, okay, what hasn't been looked at and what's kind of coming down the pike? So in speaking with, in with James, one of the areas that we thought might be a good area was the human resource area. It's not an area that has been done in a while that we've seen. It's a good area to start with and then kind of get into the payroll area, which we thought would be a good idea as well. We certainly talked about the whole IT and cybersecurity, but our feeling was that you're doing so much in that area right now. It would be best to wait and maybe look at that until some of these things are rolled out and then report back to you after we do an internal audit of that area. The reason I'm telling you this now is because, but as time we get our report and we meet again, we'd really like to kind of start working in the area that we need to work in so that we can kind of get back on, on schedule with, with the internal audit function itself. So you certainly can provide me with feedback now or, you know, we wouldn't be starting this area probably three weeks to a month from now until we wrap up the risk assessment. So you have some time to think about it. But certainly, if you have any concerns yourself, you know, I would be happy to hear them and consider them before we finalize our risk assessment.
Okay, thank you. I guess one question, and I'll ask my fellow board members what questions they have as well, but one immediate question is based on what's going on now, and this is for the business office as well. Are there any challenges in the report being delivered in a timely fashion since everyone's pretty much working remotely? Do you still feel that things are moving along the same pace, at the same pace?
You're asking your fellow board members, right?
No, I'm asking James or even both of you, not, and I'll ask.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're asking on their behalf. I find, I have to tell you, you know, we work with a lot of districts, and we're very happy and impressed with the response we're getting from, from the district itself in really trying to accommodate us getting this done so that we do keep, keep everything right on track. So I don't see any issues whatsoever. I don't know if Mike or Kyle want to chime in as well.
No, I would say that the district has been really useful and helpful in getting us the documentation we need. And, you know, we schedule pickups with individuals at our firm at, you know, momentarily to come pick up documentation and do our testing at home. Really.
Right.
But if I could just add, I think the communication has been critical and very effective. The firm has provided us with what they're looking for and given us ample time to assemble everything. We have a cyclical schedule in the business office for us all to be in there at certain periods of time to assemble what's needed. And then, as they said, we've just packaged it and, you know, created those drop-offs and pickup.
Okay, great. Anyone else have questions on the board? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Hi, guys.
We are here together. How you doing? We're at the office. Yeah, I took my, I took my computer off the docking station, rebooted, and ran into updates. So I came running into Raul's office, yeah. So anyway, we sent James to forward you a number of attachments. You know, the first one being the federal single audit from the prior year, which is due March 31st, which was filed, it's done. The only thing I want to point out about that, you know, see federal grants, and we do a single audit because it's over the $750,000 threshold. You had no findings, which is great because a lot of the districts just did have a finding because everybody had to update the purchasing policy to address the uniform guidance. And you're one of the districts who actually, you know, was proactive and did it, you know, sooner than later. So, you know, so a lot of the districts did get this finding, which you do not have. So just want to say, good job for that. Yeah. And then, you know, so then we had the audit planning meeting that we usually give you every year. Nothing's really changed in the audit process except for we're going to be doing a lot of this stuff remotely, which Raul will go into in a minute. And so the things to really point out is page eight. It lists the, us two and, you know, who else is going to be working on the account with all the contact information. If you have any questions, concerns, you can contact us directly. And then we just talked about some new GASB statements that were coming out this year on fiduciaries and leases. Fiduciary being your trusted agency fund. It's going to be totally different format, but the GASB is in the process right now of delaying those implementations for another year. They're voting next month. And so, you know, so we'll hear soon, but I can almost guarantee that it's going to be postponed a year. So it'll be business as usual. Nothing's really going to change in the format of the financial statements. And so the partners and the managers, we put together a memo for the district as far as how we're going to do the approach this year, and a couple of questionnaires, you know, you know, directed towards James and then your IT department. And I'll let Raul take over. And he'll talk about that real quick. Musical chairs, how's everyone doing today?
Good, thanks. How you doing?
Doing well. It's interesting times. Just to, to talk about what we're going to do this year, our firm actually went paperless three years ago, so we won't really see much of an impact on our end. Being paperless, I've actually conducted two, two full audits over the past three weeks, start to finish, including financial statements, at my home. So we're able to kind of get everything done in a timely fashion. As part of the process this year, we actually set up client portals at our firm. So what we're going to do in the next couple of days is we're going to send over a link to key personnel within the district, and they can actually upload documents securely to our portal. And then we can actually download the documents into our laptops and work remotely. We sent over a number of documents. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it. One of the documents was a memorandum which discussed key reports that we're going to use to sample select in various, various financial processes within the district, payroll, cash dispersments, cash receipts, journal entries and such. We're also going to do analytics early this year to see if there's any accounts that have any unusual activity as part of our audit process and maybe gear our testing substantively in those areas early so we can get, kind of get a leg up in the audit. I've noticed doing these, doing these audits remotely and using this client portal process is a give and take. It's a little slower because instead of going to the district and pulling files and looking at the files and giving back to your, your district personnel, we have to wait for it to be uploaded. And some of the documents are substantive, 30, 40, 50 pages long, so we know it's going to take a while to, to upload the document. So it's going to be a little bit longer. Usually, we're in and out in a week. Back and forth, I'm seeing it's probably going to be an extra week with the back and forth. But it's, it will get done. Another, another document we sent over that we're doing remotely is a discussion with the, the Assistant Superintendent for Business is a lengthy questionnaire that goes over any changes within the district, any new policies, procedures, expectations in revenues and expenditures, changes in personnel in key areas and such. And that's going to gear us towards, again, risk assessment and seeing which areas we need to kind of be more attached to during the audit. The final document we sent over was an IT questionnaire. We send this thing out routinely to the, to the IT department to make sure that the IT controls are adequate. And if there's any changes or any areas we can see for improvement, we will definitely take a look at and recommend in the management letter.
Yeah, and that memo is not new. We always had this.
Yes, they've, they've got it every year, but now we're doing everything remotely.
That's no difference.
Okay.
Yes, are there any questions?
Board members, you guys have any questions? No? Okay, I have one question. On document, the questionnaire you just mentioned, two points. One talked about did the district revise protocols relating to processing payroll? And then it talked about did the district revise protocols relating to purchasing and dispersments? What guidelines are being given to the district to even have for that? I mean, I understand the question asking them to, if they revise protocols, but what guidelines are giving them to make sure that we're still within certain guidelines? GASB guidelines or anything?
Yeah, but what we do is we try to make sure you're adhering to your own policies. That's, that's the key.
Right, this, this, because of this unfortunate incident and the, the emergency procedures that every district is doing at this point, we're just going to make sure that there's no break in the flow and that all the approvals and all the, the protocols and procedures within the policies are still being adhered to unless the district has instituted any emergency procedures. And then we test those to make sure they were, they were functioning effectively throughout the, the engagement.
Dr. Robinson, do you foresee any slight change to the, the protocols that we have in place now because people are working remotely? Because I know for other organizations, not necessarily the school district, things have to happen a little bit differently because some people are not necessarily going to the office, and there's like a segregation of duties that changes. Are there any differences in how things are happening for payroll? And even for you, Ms. Dr. Gallo, if there's any changes in how things are running?
Well, there's, there's definitely changes, but the changes are directly applicable just to the timing, not the protocol.
Got it.
So just in terms of how the information is flowing, yes, it takes a little bit more time to assemble all the documents. You know, you're looking at them on one string, one screen instead of seeing something spread out across a table. But in terms of protocol, not at all. We're adhering to our general business practices.
Okay, because one of the other points talked about, if anyone was receiving a live check that they now have to, I guess, is it required that they have to do direct deposit? Or are lives checks still happening right now for payroll?
Well, part of that was, you know, requirement is a strong word. We wanted to make sure that just in terms of the timing, if we were in a situation where we had an inability to cut checks, that we would not prevent somebody from receiving their money. So it was more of a, this is a, an efficiency question rather than a quote unquote requirement. We did see a lot more acceptability and buy-in to the concept. So, so the live checks are relatively few in comparison to, let's say, a year prior.
Okay. Annie, the, there are very few people that were not getting direct deposit to begin with. And when we saw this coming, Dr. Gallo reached out to the units where there were still some people who were hesitant to have direct deposit. Dr. Gallo, did, were there additional people or units that signed up, signed in, signed up for this as a result?
Well, they weren't, they didn't sign up as far as a change in their contract, but the units that did not have it mandated in their contract, we were able to get a number of those employees to provide the information so we can move them onto a direct deposit.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you. That's all that I have. Anyone else? Any questions? You guys good? Okay, thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, Dr. Kami, so do they need to leave the meeting? Is that what's best or?
Well, to me, they all look like they're having a good time, so they're welcome to stay. But they're welcome to leave as well. You guys can go. You don't have to stay, but you're certainly welcome to stay if you want to.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Stay safe.
Okay, moving on to the agenda. The Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on March 11th, March 16th, and March 17, 2020, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Got to unmute. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Smith. I'm getting feedback. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any extensions?
Any extension?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Are you guys getting feedback?
Are you guys getting feedback?
I don't know what it is. If you're, can't hear you. Better?
No, sounds better.
Okay, I just got the muting and unmuting just to make sure. Okay, moving on. Treasurer's report. The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's report for the month of February 2020, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Friday mailing.
Moved by Mrs.
Seconded. Seconded.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions? All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Are you okay with that, Ms. House? Okay. Any extensions?
Any extensions?
Motion carries. Let me try.
It's my turn now anyway, so don't worry about it, Annie.
Okay. Turning over to Dr. Kami, it's all yours.
Thank you. So there are a few updates for the board and for the community. The, the, the first is with regard to the pandemic and where we are currently as a school district. I, first of all, want to thank you, Mrs. Dreska, for your comments. I will tell you that our school system and everyone in it has worked extraordinarily hard to get to the point where we are now. We were able to literally with a flick of a switch go from live instruction to remote e-learning with barely a hiccup. That doesn't mean we're perfect. We're certainly not perfect. But our teachers and our administrators, our custodians, our clerical, all rose to the occasion. And you can hear that from the auditors because the auditors were able to do their work. We were able to get clean reports. And that, that's a district-wide example of the commitment, I would tell you, from the people inside the system. That does not go without, you know, some, some people in our system who have been ill. We have, thank God, not experienced direct tragedies, but certainly members of our community have. And I will say that one of the, one of the, rewarding is probably the wrong word, but the compassion that, that our school community and the wider community in Baldwin has shown toward the people that are a part of this system is, has just been unbelievable. Really, really unbelievable. I, I do want to address a few things. The, the, we as an administrative team, together with our teachers, are really working on answering questions constantly. And the questions that are foremost in many people's minds right now are, are we getting back to school? We have not directly answered that question because the answer to that question is not for us to answer. We were able to prepare for where we are today because we, we were able to really look into the future and use our best critical thinking to really identify that it looked that schools were going to be closed. And it looked that it was becoming a more and more dangerous situation to have a lot of people in our buildings. Sometimes people think of school systems as simple organizations that, you know, teachers come in, teachers teach, and everyone goes home, and everybody's happy, and that's really all that goes on. And the truth of the matter is, is it's really quite the opposite. We're probably the biggest employer in all Baldwin. It is a very, very complex organization, not only of what goes on behind the scenes, not just the business office and the curriculum office and HR and special education, but what goes on in schools are very, very complex. And the fact that we were able to do what we were able to do is really a testimony to everybody involved. Having said that, when we look forward to the remainder of the school year, the governor has not called for a closure for the remainder of this current school year. I think I've been pretty pointed without making a definite, giving a definite response because I am at this point not entitled to give a definite response. But I am hard pressed to see us being able to come back for the remainder of this school year. When I listened to the governor today, I heard him open up the possibility that certain parts of the state might be able to open up faster than other parts of the state. But given that Nassau. Um, but given that Nassau County has the highest number, um, behind, um, um, New York City, and at this point, I don't remember if Westchester was in, in number two or number three, and if Nassau was number two or number three. Um, we certainly have, um, the second or third highest, um, incident rate of the, uh, COVID-19. And, um, the governor has absolutely linked three things together. He talked today about, um, schools, businesses, and transportation, public transportation. And his feeling, uh, is until the three of those can work in sync with each other, um, that we'd be hard pressed to, um, be able to, um, get schools. It was, it was specifically a question that was asked about schools. Um, so we are working under the, um, belief that our schools will not open, um, for the remainder of this school year. Um, we have been working under those, um, that thinking for at least the last three weeks. And because of that, we have been having conversations, not about, um, what to do tomorrow, but we've been having conversations around, um, our high school seniors. We've been having conversations around our eighth graders moving up to middle, uh, high school, and our fifth graders moving up to, um, middle school. Um, we've got every single child in our entire school community that has either left belongings in their desk or their closet at, at the elementary level, um, in their lockers at the middle school level, in their lockers at the high school level. Um, there are textbooks out there and graphing calculators out there and instruments out there and uniforms out there, um, that we will need to get back. Um, and we need to plan for what September is going to look like. Um, because I would love to believe that September will, um, look like September looked this past year. Um, but I think we need to hope for the best and plan for the worst. And so I do not know what September is going to look like. So we are planning for, um, three things in September. We're planning for a school opening, um, as school normally opens. Um, we're planning on schools not being open, and we're planning on some combination of those two things, and we're doing that all at once. Um, while we are doing that, um, we're still talking about, um, how do we, how do we, um, make, um, senior year for our seniors whole? Um, knowing full well that we're not going to be able to restore, um, a lot of the activities that our seniors were looking forward to. And so we're spending the majority of our time talking about graduation. Um, we're talking about how can we culminate their 13 years in Baldwin in a way that is celebratory and, um, does, um, justice to their time in Baldwin, um, knowing full well that we are not going to be able to have, um, a regular graduation. Not at this point, unless something changes drastically. Um, but we are working on that, and we're working with that. Um, Dr. Testa has been having conversations with our high school students. Um, we have been having conversations, we have been reaching out to, um, companies. Um, we have all been putting our creative brains on to come up with ideas. Um, and in my latest update to the community, I certainly said that if anybody has, um, any creative ideas to let Dr. Testa and myself know. So I share that with you because I want you to know that we are thinking about this. We think about it all the time. Um, and we will, as we always do, um, we will figure out what's best for our kids and do our best for them. In addition to that, um, another thing I know is weighing on the minds of all of our students, and that's end of year grading. We, the guiding principle that we're using is to make sure that no, no student gets hurt. So, um, we are taking advantage of, um, the, the possibility or of the, the reality that there are no Regents exams this year. Um, we are not going to substitute Regents exams for final, um, exams. Instead, we're looking at, um, authentic, uh, performance assessments, which is something that we have been trying to get the state to consider as a, um, as graduation requirements, um, either in place of the Regents or, um, side to side with the Regents as a choice. Um, Dr., uh, Mr. Maniella is working together with our teachers and our principals to come up with authentic asses- assessments that mean something, that are meaningful and that are relevant. Um, we do need to make sure that our kids stay motivated to continue to be engaged, um, in part because, um, in many subjects, the, the subject material builds from year to year. Um, and in other cases, um, it might be a standalone class, but our kids are still, um, meant to be engaged in meaningful learning. So, we are, um, playing with different scenarios of how to offer our students um, the most flexibility while keeping them engaged in the learning that's going on in their classrooms. As soon as we have a reasonable solution, we'll certainly roll that out, um, either through, directly through the teachers or, um, through a more centralized, um, communication to students and to parents. Uh, but we're well on our way to that. Um, in the meantime, you know, my advice to our, um, our students and our, um, families is to, um, you know, stay motivated, keep working, um, keep learning. Um, the fact that Regents aren't happening or final exams may not happening, um, shouldn't be an excuse to, um, sit back. But in fact, um, it's an opportunity to really enjoy learning for the sake of learning. Um, so that is where we're at. The last thing I just want to, um, share with you and with the community um, is that, uh, at this current time, the budget vote and the trustee election, um, the data has still not been, uh, shared by the state. They understand that the longer they wait, the harder this is going to be for us to, um, to actually, um, be successful in, um, whether it's securing the equipment or, um, ordering the ballots. Um, it is not just me that's advocating for, uh, a decision, but, um, my state association, school boards association are all, um, trying to impress upon, um, the state education department and the governor's office that we need a decision. So, um, right now, the budget is, um, the budget that the board has approved, that's the budget that we will be going with, uh, going forward. Um, we are hoping that there will be a stimulus package that helps offset, um, a reduction in state aid. Um, but we know that, um, as of the current moment, um, the number that's been floated out to us is a reduction of 20% of state aid, which would, um, really be devastating for a district like ours. So we have been, um, advocating on behalf of the community to the governor's office and to, um, state ed. Um, and we do not have any final decision, um, at this moment. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kami. Um, any comments from the board? One at a time. Um, Ms. Coles?
I would just like to say thank you for everybody's very hard work in these difficult times. I feel like, um, you were, as always, a- ahead of it before it even really started to happen, and it made a big difference. And so just a heartfelt thank you to all of you.
Yes.
Stay safe, please.
Thanks. Ms. O'Hagan?
Hi, I just wanted to say that yesterday I participated in a meeting of refit. Like a lot of organizations, uh, we are meeting very much like this on a Zoom platform and really taking care of housekeeping business. Um, we had to suspend the bylaws, for instance, which require a certain number of meetings a year. We talked about reductions, just like we, Dr. Kami was referring to this evening, reductions in revenue, uh, and what the plans are going to be going forward, whether we will have to cancel whatever, uh, meetings, dinner meetings, and whatnot that we had planned for the early part of next year. Uh, we had a, uh, report from our executive director, uh, who is pretty much our pipeline to what's going on at the state. And I can say that, that his remarks reflected very much the same thing that Dr. Kami said. There's very little definitive information coming our way. Uh, all the things that everyone is, is frantic to know about, uh, those are the things that there's been no decision on. So, that's, that's really all there, there was at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. O'Hagan. Um, Mr. Smith?
I just want to echo what, uh, Mrs. Coles was saying, you know, um, just thank you to Dr. Kami and the whole district office and, and the staff. You guys are doing an amazing job in, in an unimaginable situation. You know, I see firsthand with my high schooler who went to e-learning and, you know, just, just kind of got in her Google classroom and is keeping up with all her teachers and keeping up with all her classes. And actually, I think she loves the fact that she can have a 10 to 3 schedule now, instead of a 7:30 to 3 schedule.
Um,
but she'd still like to go back to school, even if it means getting up at 7:30. Um, and, uh, just, um, I did participate in one of those parades. Uh, the Brookside folks invited me, and my wife drove the car, and I stood up through the sunroof and waved at the parents and thanked them all for, you know, doing a great job with, uh, helping their kids with their e-learning, you know, while most of them are probably also doing Zoom calls with their jobs. And, um, it, it was just a great feeling to, to be out there with the community and, you know, just see a lot of parents and, and just, um, uh, there's a lot of good energy in this town, and, uh, we're going to get through this. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Ms. Reed?
And I guess I will be a third to echo what Smith's Coles and Mr. Smith said. Um, I thank everyone for their hard work. This is not an easy situation, but the fact that everybody, well, I would say, I think that everyone's working together to do the best they can in servitude of our students. I greatly appreciate it on a personal level. I also was able to attend the Plaza Car Parade and the Steel Car Parade. And it's, it's a phenomenal idea. It's a great, um, I, uh, was grateful, I think, our community spirit. And appreciate all the, that went into planning that and all that participated in that as well. So, that's all I got.
So as you can see, a, a lot of gratitude, um, from our board and, like we said, from the community, attending these, uh, parades, I attended too. You get very emotional because a lot of the kids are still excited, and teachers. You could see how everyone really misses each other, and, um, I got all teary-eyed, and I was like, oh gosh, this is crazy. And, and then you realize, wow, this is really a family. This is an extended family. So, um, uh, you know, hopefully we will reunite and be able to hug each other again. It's kind of weird when you see people either going to the grocery store and you have to say hi from a distance or pull your mask down so they don't think you're a stranger waving at them or trying to cut them online or something so they can see who you are. But, um, again, as everyone said, thank you all, and, um, we will get through this. And, as we mentioned earlier, in terms of comments, uh, from the, uh, community, we've received comments. They were asked to be sent electronically, and I believe, um, they, uh, they will be responded to via email. Correct, Dr. Kami?
So the one question that we got, um, I believe I just answered.
Okay, okay, great. So that's good. Okay, so we're good to move on? Alrighty. I miss you guys being louder, too. Everyone's on mute. I might need to either keep that idea going forward later on, but I really miss the voices. Um, okay, Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report dated April 22nd, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
So moved. Seconded.
So moved.
Seconded.
By Mrs. Smith, second by.
The voices.
All right, all right. Mrs. Reed, um, due to the confidentiality of this report, if it's reported in public, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Special Services, the Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-SC-504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for Services in November and December 2019, and January, February, and March 2020, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Cool, second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Again, this cannot be discussed in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Mrs. Reed? Mrs. Reed is saying aye, but she's on mute. Are you okay with that, Ms. Hobbs?
Mrs. Hobbs, can you read lips?
I'd like to hear what, what Mrs. Reed is saying.
Okay, so we'll wait for Mrs. Reed. It's the mute that's on. I don't, let me see if I can do it for you. I don't think I can since I'm not a host.
There's just a space bar and you can speak.
I'm sorry, I clicked on something. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Yeah, the, I apologize for this feedback. It comes and goes.
Um, It, I think it only comes when Karen is unmuted. Sorry.
Okay. The Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Seconded.
On Mr. Smith? All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, 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 aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
I see what you're saying, Mr. Smith. I think the feedback comes unfortunately when you're on, when you're not on mute. Yeah, you're right. Let's see. Okay. Board of Education approves the establishment of a scholarship award in the amount of $125, sponsored by the New Explosion Athletic League. It should be awarded to a graduating senior needing certain criteria, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much to the Explosion Athletic League. Board of Education approves the establishment of a scholarship award in the amount of $500, sponsored by RBC Blue Speaks, to be awarded to a graduating senior who is the autism spec- who is on the autism spectrum and meets certain criteria, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Board of Education approves the budget transfers over $10,000 from February 1, 2020, through February 29, 2020, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Board of Education approves the resolution to authorize the issuance of tax anticipation notes and revenue anticipation notes, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Second by Mrs., Mr. Smith. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Board of Education accepts the 2019 federal single audit, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Move by, move by Mrs. O'Hagan, second by Ms., Mrs. Reed?
No.
Oh, by Mr. Smith. That's what I thought. I thought I heard Mrs. Reed and Mr. Smith. Okay. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the resolution for the school district to participate in the intermunicipal cooperative transportation agreement for the 2020-2021 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded. Seconded.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the intermunicipal agreements between Baldwin- between Baldwin UFSD and Scope Educational Services as well as the individual agreements with the eight scope post-school districts for the period March 23, 2020 through June 30 of 2020 to provide emergency childcare services to children of first responders and medical services providers per the governor of New York's executive orders as detailed.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions?
Yeah, I just was curious, and just for our attendees, I'm not sure if everybody realizes this is because of the governor's executive order that the school districts should help take care of the children of the first responders. Dr. Kami, could you elaborate a little bit on what has been going on for the children of the Baldwin parents?
Sure. We were, when the executive order came down that schools were going to be closed, we had to do three things. We had to provide to the state a continuity of learning plan, which we were able to do immediately. We had to ensure that children of first responders from birth through school age had childcare.
From birth? Not even just school age? Wow.
And we had to ensure that we would be able to continue to feed those people in need breakfast and lunch. And so we engaged, as did many school districts in the county, with an organization called Scope to make sure that that school aid, they provide for ages four and up, that we were able to provide childcare for those young people. And Dr. Robinson's office called all of the community childcare centers to identify if they had room and were staying open and were able to accept birth to age, whatever they serve. And we were, we posted that information on our website. And what you approve tonight or will approve tonight is a, an agreement with eight different scope sites for our parents to choose from for childcare options.
Thank you, Dr. Kami.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the Health and Welfare Service Contracts for the 2019-2020 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Use of facilities, oh, there is no use of facilities report until further notice. And use of fields report for spring 2020, none until further notice. In terms of the Board of Education meeting dates for 2021, the Board of Education approves the reorganization meeting to be held on Wednesday, July 1, 2020.
So moved.
Do I do them separately, Mrs. Hobbs? Okay. Moved by Mrs. Coles, second by Mrs. Reed. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry. Board of Education approves the Board of Education meeting dates for the 2021 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith.
Second.
By Mrs. Reed. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board of Education authorizes the Baldwin Parents in Partnership for School Age Childcare, Inc., to continue 2020-2021 to use district facilities as identified by the district in consultation with the service providers for the purpose of conducting a before and after-school childcare program and the continuation of the SWIM program as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
By Mrs. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Same motion carries. Textbook Loan Program 2020-2021, the Board of Education approves the Letter of Intent and Textbook Central Agreement from the Tel Logic, Inc., Textbook Central for Participation in the Non-Public School Textbook Program for the 2020-2021 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions?
Any questions?
Who was the second by? I didn't hear that.
By Mrs. Reed. All the, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Board of Education has a first reading on the following policies and revisions as detailed in the Friday mailing. Policy 6800, Payroll Procedures Revision. Policy 9500, Compensation and Benefits. The Board of Education has a second read and adopts the following policies and revisions as detailed in the Friday mailing. Policy 553, Student Assignment to Schools and Classes. Policy 5500, Student Records Revision. Policy 5550, Student Privacy Revision.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reed. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Amended Reorganization Meeting Minutes. The Board of Education approves the amended reorganization meeting minutes as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Board of Education approves the next available impartial hearing officer, Martin Kieho, for case number 10639.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Smith, second by Mrs. Coles. Was that?
This is Reed.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mary, just making sure you got that, because I think I hesitated. You're, you're okay with the?
I got that it was Tom motioned, Mr. Smith motioned. Mrs. Reed seconded.
Okay, great.
And everybody, everyone agreed.
Okay. The Board of Education approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes and approves the execution of an agreement with the Baldwin Teachers Association and the notification period for the retirement benefit in the CBA.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Coles. Any questions?
What is, what does CBA stand for?
It's an agreement with the unit.
Okay. Oh, collective bargaining agreement? Ah. Aye.
All those in favor, aye. Mr. Smith is aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. Motion carries. Other, anything on the other? Well, I am very happy that none of my kids walked in on this meeting. I was like, please don't let me be a meme and all over the social media as the kids that come dancing with underpants or something.
I almost was. She's running around the house, wanting in.
Okay, well, again, thank you all. I think this went smoothly. I think we went through everything. We, we're good? Okay, can I get a motion to end the meeting? Wow, at nine o'clock. On the.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, Joel and Doris.
Carries. Be safe, everyone. Thanks, everyone. Thanks.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.